Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Present.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Here.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you. Item three, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, February 14th, 2023. You've had an opportunity to look at those. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
I'll make a motion. I'll say it.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed is no. Hear none. Item four, proclamations or recognition of citizens by the mayor. I don't know of any that he had relayed to us. Item five, communications from City Administrator James Fincham.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. The first thing on my agenda, I would like to give you an update on the Welcome Center at the Tanner Building. Today, the awning finally went up. It took us a year to get that thing up, but it is finally up. We don't have the, we've not put any wording on it yet, but the structure itself is up. And also, I would like to introduce our manager for the Welcome Center, Monica Homel. She started a couple of weeks ago, and she hit the ground running. She's putting in a lot of work up there, getting that thing ready to go. And we hope in the next, within some time in April, we will be having the grand opening and having a ribbon cutting. And of course, we'll invite everybody to that. But she, we're really, really pleased with her enthusiasm and her ideas. She's got a lot of good ideas, and so we feel like we've got the right person for the job. Budget, we are winding up the budget for next year. In the April meeting, we will be handing out packets for you all to take home and study and consider, and then we will have it ready for the first reading in the May, at the May meeting. So that will give you 30 days, as always, as tradition, to study it and ask any questions you may have about it. I will tell you that it's been a little bit of a slog because of the inflation that has driven everything up and the effect it's had on our expenses and costs. And so, we've had to push, which we've tried to be as ambitious as money would allow the last few years. And this year, we're having to, we're going to have to slow down a little bit on some things because, and push them back. And by that, I mean, push them out till the next year or the following year. Just, you can't, we're not going to do anything that the money won't allow. And because we're getting paid down pretty good on our debt, and we don't, we don't want to go back in debt. We want to get out of debt. And so, if we can't afford to do it, we're just going to put it off. And that's, we're not, we're having to put anything big off right now yet, but we probably will. It's in the next year or two, we'll probably have to push some things back if things don't change. And I don't know if prices will go back down or not. You hope they will. But we're wanting to try and give a decent raise again this year. Y'all were very generous last year in trying to stay close to the inflation rate for last year. I don't think we're going to be able to do that this year because, just because of the inflation and because of what it's done to our costs. So we want to give as good a raise as we can to try to help the employees because it does adversely affect them, just like it does all of us. And so, we'll be as generous as the money will allow, but we're not going to be able to keep up with it like we did last year. It's just not, it's not going to be there. The money's not. We've already had to push a couple of things back to just stay where we are right now, and we're hoping to finalize the budget this week and then just kind of go back over it a little bit before we get it to you in April. But we're on target and we're on time. It's just that we ended up having to take some things out just because our revenue's good. It's just that the costs are just up so much. It's, you know, it just is what it is. But we're going to have, I don't, I think it's the last Saturday of the month, we're going to try, we're going to have a coordinated litter pickup between the city, the county, and keep Cock County beautiful. And I met with Chief Deputy Doug Atkins yesterday, and we discussed it. And Grant Webb and I had already talked about having a pickup later this, at the end of the month, and it just so happened they had the same idea. And we're going to do a joint thing with all three organizations to try to encourage folks to clean up their little space on that same day. So there'll be more about that come out, you know, to publicize that and encourage folks to participate. We're going to pick up the highways and stuff, and if people will pick up around their area, then you can make a difference citywide. But just an update on the alcohol rehab facility behind CVS. The state of Tennessee came in and did an inspection of it. I've got a copy of their report here, if anybody'd like to see it or have a copy of it. I didn't just go ahead and give it to you. I didn't know how many would be interested in it. But I can tell you that they found several deficiencies in the building, one of which is a big one, it's going to have to be sprinkled, and it is not. And so, they have a certain amount of time to comply, or the state will deal with them. So the state has inspected, the state has written up the deficiencies and given a timeline on when to comply. So that is being handled by the state. And if there's no questions, that's what I got.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Item six, appointment of boards, commissions, or committees, and there's none listed. And reports from committees. Number seven, members of council and other officers, and there's nothing listed there. So turn your page over to O Business. Item number eight, item A, consideration of second reading of ordinance 2023-01, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
Yes, Mayor, I'll read the caption of that. Ordinance number 2023-01, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2022-2023.
Thank you, Terry. Do we have any comments or questions, or do we have a motion to approve on the second reading?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Does that require a roll call?
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes. Item B is consideration of second reading of ordinance 2023-02. You read that, Terry.
Yes, sir. It's ordinance number 2023-02, an ordinance amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title IV Personnel Policy, Chapter Eight, Miscellaneous Policies, Adding Section 4-818, Occupational Safety and Health Program Plan.
Any comments, discussion, or do we have a motion to approve as written?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes. Section nine, under New Business, item A, is consideration of first reading of ordinance 2023-03, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And that is ordinance number 2023-03, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee fiscal year 2022-2023 for Newport Grammar School.
Any questions or discussion, or do we have a motion to approve on first reading?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? We don't do roll, we still have to do roll call.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Yeah, we do, this is zero four we need to do.
Item B is consideration of the first reading of ordinance 2023-04.
Yes, and that's ordinance 2023-04, an ordinance amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title VIII, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter Four, Permits, Section 4-412, Adding Six, Outdoor Serving Area in C-1 Zone Regulations.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
No, we don't, yeah. We need to, yeah, we need to let Gary explain that a little bit, just so, just for the record.
This amends what we have on the books. We do currently allow for outdoor seating with alcohol cells, but the regulation, because the two that took advantage of it were Fox and Hound and Rees-Rac, and those are both adjacent to residential neighborhoods. This is specifically for the C1, for downtown, and most specifically because of the development, the rehabilitation, and the different partners that are going to be in the Newport Hardware Building, Duncan and Greer Center, yeah, that's what we're calling it. And they had approached us about amending those to allow for outdoor seating without the, most specifically without the blind fence, the privacy fence. Because the idea would be for people to go by, see that there's outdoor music, that there's outdoor activity, that there's life on that block of downtown, and then go check it out. So it, the, and we're not reinventing the wheel. This is Moorestown's policy with one thing added in. And I think that we changed the height of the fence or the barrier that you got to have per the request of the Beer Board. Beer Board did vote to pass it on with favorable recommendation to the full city council. I don't, am I leaving anything out? I don't, anybody got any questions beyond all that?
This is very common. If you go to, you know, if you go to any city, pretty much, because I've been, I've been everywhere, but I've been a lot of places, and even Gatlinburg and places, you, people, you have outdoor dining where folks can sit and watch the people walk by. And they can have their meal, but they can also have an alcoholic beverage, a beer or a mixed drink or a glass of wine. And so, under our current setup, you can't do that. You can't be seen outside with consuming alcohol. And so, this, you know, and this, this is not trying to say we're promoting drinking. We're not. This is simply trying to follow a standard that is pretty much the same everywhere you go. It's just, we're much more restrictive here than they are in most towns. And with the businesses that are wanting to locate downtown, this is something that is common in those type businesses. And these folks know that. And us restricting that hurts us in trying to recruit those kind of businesses downtown because they are used to having that ability at their, at other locations. And so, us being restrictive hurts us in trying to recruit those type of restaurants downtown.
And it only changes it for the C1, the protection, the privacy fence remains in C2 and C3, I suppose, even though the C2 is where you can be neighborhood, residential neighborhood adjacent. So the privacy fence will remain for Rees-Rac and Fox and Hound or anybody else that happens to be in those zones.
Yeah, it'll just be downtown. That's the only place it'll be changed.
But they have to have a privacy fence.
They still have to have a fence, but they, it don't have to be eight feet tall. You know, it can be short. There has to be a fence, but it doesn't have to be six or eight feet tall.
A barrier that demarcates where you, where you can't, you can't have it in your hand and leave, yeah.
You can't leave with it, and someone can't walk off the street into it. It's, it's, there's a barrier there. But you can see, you can see, you can be seen from the street. The way it is now, it has to be completely hidden. You can't, it has to be tall enough to no one can see into the seating area. And nowhere else does that. This is the only place that does that, that I know of, you know, in a downtown area. Now, like he said, it's, you know, if you're close to a residential neighborhood, it's different, but to be in a strictly commercial area, it's just not done anywhere. Everywhere you go, and I'm sure all of y'all been somewhere where you see people sitting on a patio eating and they're having a glass of wine.
And it was our, what we've got was written for Rees-Rac and Fox and Hound when they wanted to do it. So if, we've not ever had anything like this downtown for this to even come up. So we're adapting with the change.
Is there a time limit at night when they, if they're having music, that they have to shut the music down, or?
Eleven, eleven to seven, is that our?
Yeah, midnight on Friday and Saturday. Yeah, there's a, there's already a noise ordinance on the book. You have to be quiet after 11:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and then it's midnight on Friday and Saturday. But that's been in place for many years.
With the addition of the residential apartments in the First Baptist Church Building, is that going to play into this at all because it will be somewhat residential in that area?
I, it is, I think it's just an understood thing that when you, if you're going to live in a commercial, in your C1 commercial hub, then you accept some things about how loud or how quiet it may be on a Friday night.
It's like folks that live down around the old city or Market Square in Knoxville. You know, you know, when you buy a condo or rent an apartment in that part of town, you're going to be subjected to noise. It's an unreasonable expectation to think that you can buy a condo in, on Market Square, and it's going to be quiet on the weekend. It is not, you know. And most people that go there and buy or rent those places, they know that, and that's why they go there. They want to be in walking distance to all those amenities, and so they're, they're good with it because they plan on being in the middle of it. So they're in walking distance to home. So most of the time, it's very rare that you have someone that moves into a neighborhood like that and didn't realize what they're signing up for because that's probably what drew them to that location to begin with, was the ability to partake and participate and have that lifestyle.
We've not seen specs on anything for the church yet, of course, but I would imagine that given the train, the, how close it is to a major highway, that they'll have some sort of sound, sound, not roofing, but sound absorbent windows and insulation that would help with that kind of thing.
Yeah, the train and the tractor trailers would be enough to run me out of downtown. You know, the music on the weekend would be the least of my problems because I, you know, I couldn't handle that. I don't, the, each his own, brother.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We got a motion? We have a second?
I'll say it.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
No.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
No.
Three to two?
Thank you.
Yeah, three to two.
Are you waiting for C?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just here if you got questions. I don't necessarily need to.
Okay.
He's got most of the agenda. It's mostly his show tonight.
It'll be war out.
Same things never change, chief.
Okay, item C, consideration of first reading of ordinance 2023-05.
Yes, Mayor, that's ordinance 2023-05, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Newport to include the properties on Highway 73 and Sierra Road in the M-1 zone.
Any comments or questions? First reading?
And this, this is the final step in the annexation process of the distribution center on the Edwana Road. Being inside the city, it has to be zoned, and because every, all of our properties are zoned. And so, this is just establishing a appropriate zone for that annexation.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, ordinance 2023-05 is written.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes. Thank you. Item D, consideration of resolution 2023-01. You don't read that one? Authorizing the city of Newport to apply for the ARC grant for streetscape improvements.
This is, I brought this up, I guess, last month. This is the $1 million Streetscape Grant that we're targeting Woodlawn with that will be a game changer for that whole, that street. We're taking one of the, one of the most rundown areas and with the private development between East Tennessee LLC that's going to happen there, and hopefully all at the same time, so we're only ripping up that street once and not twice. And we're looking at some other funds, too, to possibly stack on top of this through the Tennessee Main Street Program that could put us up. Because unfortunately, a million dollars doesn't go that far. It doesn't go as far as it used to. So we're looking at funding to go on top of this, but it, just with what we got, this is going to make an impact. And this is just the hoop you jump through so that you can, we have been invited to apply, and this, this checks their box, and then we go on to the next step. Probably find out about this sometime, probably September. It's usually by the fall that you hear back on these.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? We don't have a resolution. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item A, consideration of sale agreement of riverfront lots.
You have a purchase agreement in front of you that was handed over from Daybreak Real Estate Holdings. This is, Ms. Wu, the lady that's purchased the church and many of the buildings on Main Street's cleaning those up for us. She has interest in doing a riverfront development that would be in partnership with us. Those two properties are currently, Tim, we've got a, I don't think we've got plans. We've got a concept stuff for the riverfront park. We would be looking at, at still doing that in cooperation with Ms. Wu. We would just scale down what, the size of the park because it's two, was it two, it's one acre lots, Aaron? Yeah, so it's about two total acres of, and this is the concept stuff that she brought in, that Aaron brought in. How long ago was that? It was back in the fall, right?
A few months ago.
Yeah. But there's just a couple of things we were trying to work out between other property owners and Ms. Wu that I wanted to be, feel comfortable before I could recommend that we do this, and I do now. Did you want to, this, Aaron's representing the buyer, so if.
You got any questions?
Yeah.
Gary, we actually don't have anything in our books except the orange sheet.
Oh.
Yeah.
It is, that's my bad, I guess. It's.
Versus seller.
Yeah. What, do you have it in front of you?
I have it over here.
Yeah, give them the number, I guess, to be best, and. It was in last month, but it should have gone back in this month. Seventeen, seventeen thousand five hundred for both lots. And there's typical real estate stuff down there for the rest of it.
Show me the 200-day due diligence.
Yes.
For the details. So looking closely at around the end of this year.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. I would say as far as the detail.
Yes.
We can brief summary.
Go for it.
Okay. So first surprise, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. David Property Holdings, twenty-five hundred dollars fee paid by the seller for this property. Closing date will be December, latter part of this year. We've got a 270-day due diligence period because there'll have to be some studies done on that particular piece of property for the development. There'll have to be some soil tests, soil sciences, and some other studies that'll be done on there as far as architectural design and whatnot. That will take place. The closing on this property is actually set for the latter part of this month, the 27th, I believe, this month. No, I'm sorry. We, yes, we've allowed for the whole year for closing. We get the due diligence, but we need a confirmation from the city stating that this offer will be accepted with these current conditions in order for us to move forward. And the development, again, let's say back in the fall, the development is going to be two stories. I believe we were talking at three at the time, but we scaled it down to two. That way, we don't have to get necessarily the state involved, but we're looking to do condos as well as retail and restaurants on the lower level floor. And again, we have to have parking space. We have to get access across the railroad. There's some other conditions that has to be met as far as adjoining properties as well, but it starts basically with the acceptance of the conditions.
And the green label will still be attached down to the building?
This, this, this doesn't change anything for the overall plan, other than it moves the park over slightly, and we've had positive early discussions with other property owners over there about kind of making that exchange. So it's a, it, and we've got a private developer with the means and the ways to make it happen. So, big deal.
She did tell me I could share this news with everyone tonight. Construction plans are in effect for Phase One of the church. Construction should start by the end of this year on Phase One of the church.
And she plans on using Opportunity Zone money. So the minute that all this, the clock starts ticking as soon as she acquires the property. She's got five years, so it won't be something where somebody's just sitting on something and not doing anything with it, which is, it plagues us here sometimes.
I'll make that vote and then. Second.
Gary, is there, one of the concerns I've got, I'm not trying to throw a cog in anything, but I'm concerned about downtown parking for the existing businesses that we have. What are, what plan have we got to continue parking here? Because we got, you know, we have to take care of our people that's here now and then still help the ones trying to develop.
And you're talking about downtown in its entirety, the footprint of downtown itself, not necessarily just the riverfront development?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, Aaron, if you want to, like, we, because he's helped me with some of this stuff when we were talking about the sale of the other lot. Do you know the stats off the top of your head? Because I, yeah.
I'm going to ballpark, but best I recall, there was 190 parking spaces downtown. I have yet to see 190 parking spaces filled downtown, of course. We can get an additional, I think, 37 parking spaces up Neth Avenue. We're working on a public-private partnership. We're working on a public-private partnership between McMahon Avenue and also Woodlawn in the back area there. Also, I think there's a private-public partnership that's in effect for Newport Plain Talk as well.
I've got, I've got the, I'm working on the lease agreement right now. But yeah, they've agreed to share that space.
The Plain Talk?
Yes.
Yeah, because I talked to representatives there.
Yeah.
Or they had talked to me about it.
Yeah, yeah.
We just, we just finally got a copy of a lease agreement today. We've been trying to get that for a while to look at. And Gary just shared with me today that he finally had gotten it. So that, that process has been moving slow. But we've been talking about it for months.
We, and to, whenever we were talking about the purchase, the purchase agreement on the city lot, there are, there are things that we're looking at, but it's going to, it's going to entail acquiring property. And it's good to not necessarily, to have those conversations with the property owners, but not have them reading the paper the first time that, oh, you want my lot? Yeah, now it's double, you know what I mean? So that, that kind of stuff, we've, we, we, it wasn't the time nor the place necessarily to come out and say, here's what we're going to do to make up the spaces that we lost with the Broadway and McMahon lot.
Okay.
But yeah, it, Aaron's helped me with a lot of stuff on this. We've already been kicking around ideas on how to not even just replace the spaces that were, that were in that Broadway McMahon lot, but to add. Because once we start adding density from Woodlawn over to Wall Street, then we're going to definitely need more parking on that side of town. But yeah, we're, we're planning out, we're plotting out. It's just, it's, and I can, and I've drawn a couple of things that I can, I'll show any of you guys. But, you know, throwing it up here and talking about, yeah, we're going to go for this lot, and then that, that property owner may not like to hear that.
Well, as long as we're trying to make sure we take care of our current businesses.
Yes, sir. I know, I know that I've had a couple of the business owners and property owners reach out to me, and then when I've kind of told them the plan, they, they very much relieved that we do have a plan. We're not just giving this stuff away. Yes.
That was something we discussed early on in this process, was that we had to have a long-term plan to go along with this progress. You know, hopefully, we'll need all kinds of parking. That's the goal. And so we, we want the parking availability to grow with the need. And so you don't have to, you know, there's no need to go out and create a lot of parking when you don't need it yet.
Right.
So we want, we want to try to grow, grow them together. As the demand grows, the availability will grow with it.
And we're following models that other towns do with, when they kind of do their, yeah. So it's not, I'm not, I'm not swinging blind here. I've, I've got kind of the roadmap that Greenville's used with their public parking process. And that's actually who got me the lease for the, the lot that they, they rented off of a bank downtown. So, yeah.
Okay. We've had a motion and a second. Any other questions? Wouldn't you do a roll call on that?
Probably since we're selling property.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanne Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll promise I'll go sit down now.
Thank you. Item F, this consideration of naming an alley in the city of Newport.
Okay. If y'all remember last month, I brought this up and broke everybody's attention, that we had found this alley over in Clifton Heights that had no name. And so I put forth that we would be open to any suggestions that anyone had. And so during the time period since then, we, the way that the alley came to our attention was there was a problem that someone had called in about a resident. And that, that's how we found the alley, was to go over and investigate that complaint. And, you know, and that's how we found out about it. And so since, while we were trying to mitigate that problem, we got into referring to it as No Name Alley. You know, if you checked on that, No Name Alley, yeah, they've not done this. Or what about No Name Alley? You know, we, for a month now, we've been calling it No Name Alley. So at the department head meeting that we have every Monday, we were discussing it a little bit. And it came up, well, look, everybody's been, if nobody's got a better idea, and we've been calling it No Name Alley for a month, let's just name it No Name Alley. And I thought, well, I don't know, you know. But I called up at 911 and checked with them to see, you know, I know it would be kind of whimsical in a way, but it'd definitely be a novelty. But I checked with, with the folks up at 911, and they chuckled at it, but they said it would not be a problem at all if we chose to officially name it No Name Alley. So if y'all have a better idea, I'm open to that. Whatever y'all, y'all's decision, whatever you want to do, but that's, that's the best we come up with. So I assure you, it wasn't just lazily done. It just kind of morphed into that during the process because you had to call it something when you were asking about it. And so we just got to call it No Name Alley. And I guess it stuck.
Very creative.
All right.
We suggest you finish him, Rose.
No, that already is. Thankfully, that already exists. So no duplications. No duplications. But that's, that's the best we got. Sorry.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
I'd just, I'd like to ask, the two chiefs got any problem? Our public safety chiefs? I don't remember. I've been on that alley over the years a few times lately. Never been sent there, I don't think, to answer a call.
As long as it's no street sign, that's all.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we discussed it at the department head meeting, and there, there wasn't any, there wasn't any issues. I know a conversation I have with James, if we tried to research the history of people that lived on that street, we would, we couldn't pick the right one.
I'm not everybody mad at.
Right, I mean, you know.
This is very generic.
Well, I make a motion to name it No Name Alley.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other nominations? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none.
Thank you. Sorry, that's the best we could come up with.
You've done good, James. You won't get a raise, but Mr..
Well, I hear you, I hear you.
Item G, consideration of certificate of compliance for Lex wine and spirits.
Maybe y'all have a packet that shows the proposed buyer of the sale of the liquor store. What this is, is to show, and I need those back, too, at the end of the meeting. We're going to, we need to shred those because they have so much personal data and information in them. But that is to show that they meet the requirements that we have here that will allow them to apply to the state to make this purchase. And so we don't make the decision on whether or not they qualify at the state level to, to purchase this business and operate a liquor store. We just say that they have met the minimum requirements that we have at the local level and that they are in compliance with our rules and regulations. And that allows them to move on to the next step, which is at the state level where that decision is ultimately made.
Is that the West End?
Yes, sir.
Packaged store? Okay. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I'm having a motion to second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Section 10, bids purchased as expensive. Item A is consideration of bids for UniFirst for the street department. I'm coming for you tonight to ask that you would approve a three-year contract with UniFirst. Right now, we are with Syntox. And this is where we buy the employees' clothes and we get our janitorial services from these people. And we've researched it, and it looks like that we could save about $3,800 a year by, we're with UniFirst. And we're having some issues with Syntox with receiving their stuff. And also, we checked it out, and UniFirst is on the NJPA list, and that means we don't have to bid it out. So anybody that's on that list, we can pick from it. What's your pleasure?
A motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion, second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed is no. I hear none.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Appreciate it. Item B is consideration of bids for equipment for the Newport Fire Department.
Hello, board. I'm here to request that we, we have our new truck that keeps getting delayed, but this is equipment for that. I'm requesting the purchase of four air packs, four face masks, and eight bottles for that. Now, the, the bottles are going to be kind of twofold. We have some bottles that are coming up, and in a few years, we're going to have to start replacing. So this is going to be able to work this into our rotation. But we're going to get this from MES, which has a Sourcewell contract bid, so we don't have to, we don't have to bid it out. And the total is $35,308.
What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed is no. I hear none.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item C is consideration of bids for a tractor for the parks and rec.
They'll go and say in our department head meeting, who has agenda items? None of us want to be up here verifying what our bids came in at. But again, we all have to be here, right?
Right.
I've got three of them here, but we'll go with the first one. The consideration bids on the tractor for the parks and rec. This is one of our four-wheel-drive mowers that is 21 horsepower at the PTO four-wheel drive. It's what we use on everything that's not flatland. So this takes a mower out that's been with us about 15 years now and has quite a few hours on it. Then, and that total came in from Tri-County Power, a tractor at $21,500. It is a budgeted line item.
Yes.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item D?
Thank you, counsel.
Bids for replacement of metal roofing?
Yes, sir. This is one of those projects that Mr. Fincham had talked about earlier that had been pushed from the pandemic in the '20. And we pushed it out to '23 so that we could do our, our safe program at the community center and not have any interruptions. And of course, Calvin Ball has submitted the bid and the openings and won the, won the pricing at $25,962.91.[1617.12]